I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America's hands, one nation, under God, in the symbol with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have some special recognitions this evening. Dr. Brunel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one, the first two actually are regarding middle school students. The first one is Bella Coughlin. She is a sixth grader at Auburn Middle School. And the Celtics organization put out a contest in recognition of Black History Month. And students needed to explain in 250 words or less what Black History Month meant to them. And Isabella, they call her Bella Coughlin, actually was recognized for that. She wrote here just an absolutely beautiful essay that I thought was really very touching. She's actually, has already gone to a basketball game on Saturday, the February 27th, against the Miami Heat. She was able to meet a Celtics player and also just to be on center court. So, great recognition for her and really a beautiful story, I thought.
Would you like to read the essay, Dr. Brunel?
Sure.
For those at home, or I'll read it if you prefer.
No, I would be, if you want to, but I'm happy to do it either way. You tell me.
Maybe coming from a woman's voice, it might sound a little better.
Okay.
But it is a beautiful story. I think while the people at home are watching, maybe they would enjoy it.
I agree. So, it starts off with mommy. This is the coolest girl. There was the coolest girl at my new school. She has awesome black hair with cool braids with beads at the ends of them. Can you please do my hair like that? I want to look just like my friend. I went on to explain to my mom that she had brown skin and was really nice, and I wanted her to be my friend. Right away, my mom agreed and filled my hair with braids and even stuck some of my craft beads on the ends. I was so excited. I ran to the bathroom, looked in the mirror, and started to cry. I looked awful. I looked nothing like my friend at school. My mom tried to explain to me that we had a different type of hair, but that my braids were just as beautiful as hers. Every February when we start to discuss Black History Month, I'm reminded of this day. I was a little white girl who did not see a little African-American girl. I met a nice girl, loved her cool hair, and wanted to be just like her. I saw her kindness. I saw her beauty. I did not see her color. I realized as I got older that ignorance and racism is learned. My mom always told me hate comes from hate. We are not born judging others. We are not born hating people just because they simply look different. I consider myself lucky to be raised by parents who taught me to like people, all people. I hope one day I have a little girl who comes from school and wants to look just like her African-American friend. That would mean I never taught her hate, never taught her to see color, never ruined the beautiful blank slate. We are all born.
Nice job. That was a, that was a beautiful story. So, I just thought it worthy of everyone at home hearing it. When I read it, I was, I was really touched by it.
Very great.
Really, very nice story.
Yeah.
I thought very touching and I think it offers for our children to grow up like that.
It was, it's excellent. Congratulations to Isabella Coughlin. That's excellent. And we have another special recognition.
We do. Lucas Bellistracci, who is a student, a seventh grade student actually, at Auburn Middle School, was recently, will serve as a representative as one of the state semifinalists in the National Geographic State Bee. This is a very challenging, the National Geographic Bee that's held every year is really very challenging. And for Lucas to have made it to the state level is really quite an achievement. He will be attending at the Elms College in Chicopee. And the contest will be on Friday, April 1st. So, it is really a high recognition and I offer great congratulations to him.
Any comments?
Yes. I know those questions are tough, so to get that far is pretty awesome.
I'd just like to say that it's excellent when our students step up because though we have many great students, you know, it's only a few here and there that really put their best foot forward and put themselves out there frankly to be criticized and critiqued and possibly lose these contests, but they do it and they continue to do it. And it's appreciated when the kids step up like that.
Yes, I agree.
So, that's excellent. Great recognitions. And on a sad note.
So, just wanted to share with you that a longtime educator at Auburn High School, Shirley De Pasquale, passed away recently. She is survived by her husband, John, and her two children, Amy Faber and her husband, Jason, of Auburn, and Jay De Pasquale and his wife, Katia, of Everett, Washington, as well as her brother, John McCutcheon, and his wife, Mary Ann, of Westfield, as well as their three grandchildren, Isabella Faber, Samuel Faber, and Giovanni De Pasquale. I also want to share that, so after Shirley worked in the district as a math teacher, a coach, a department chair for 39 years, after she retired, she came back and served as a math coach for us, really trying to pass on her love of math. And that was spoken about at her memorial service, how much she loved math. So, I'd ask us all to join in a moment of silence. Thank you.
And are there any citizens' comments this evening? Seeing none. I would seek the approval of the minutes for February 17th.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for February 17th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Now, seek approval and release of the executive session minutes for January 7th, 2015, January 22nd, 2015, March 4th, 2015, April 1st, 2015, April 15th, 2015, April 25th, 2015, May 20th, 2015, June 3rd, 2015, and September 2nd, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. I would also seek approval of only the executive session minutes of March 18th, 2015.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes on March 18th, 2015.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Seeing no student representatives. Cecilia, would you like to fill in for them? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the much-good news continues. Mrs. Lopez is here with some of her students as well as parents. As you know, last school year, it was their first robotics competition that they entered at Quinn Sigammon. And they won and were invited to the Worlds down in Kentucky. They recently participated again and in true Auburn fashion, they, a team of them, won again. So, they are here. Mrs. Lopez will fill you in and to seek your approval on taking another great trip.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is exciting. I know we go in as Auburn and we go in to win. On Saturday, February 20th, 2016, a group of students consisting of four teams from Swanson Road Intermediate School, the Robotics Club, we competed in a competition at Quinn Sigammon Community College. It was the Southern New England Regional Vex IQ Challenge Bank Shot, which is different from last year's. The championship was held at, on this day. And these students, all of them work so tremendously hard. But one team actually just won above and beyond and they won the Excellence Award. The Excellence Award is the highest award presented at the Vex IQ Challenge. And this is nationally and worldwide. The recipient of this award is the team that best exemplifies overall excellence in creating a well-rounded Vex IQ program. The team excels in teamwork, which is the basis for this entire competition. The strongest contender wins or has high rankings in numerous categories. And this team was recognized for building a quality robot, delivering an effective STEM project, a presentation, submitting a well-documented science notebook, and demonstrating their commitments to excellence, which speaks to Auburn's commitment to excellence as well. And if I could, I'd like to introduce the team of Swiss robotics students that will be hopefully traveling to Kentucky with your approval with their coach, Mrs. Christine Lloyd, who is here tonight. I would like to introduce Quinn Cahill. Come on over. Anthony Lloyd. Isabella Doyle. And not here, he's homesick, is Trevor Smith. At this time, I also would like to either ask for permission that we could go to Kentucky, or I will take any questions you may have for me as well as the students. And if, Mrs. Lloyd, if you'd like to come to the microphone as well. This is her second year competing in the robotics. We were lucky at Swanson Road to have her again. She's also Science Teacher of the Year. She's a Worcester Public School teacher, but home to Auburn. And we have truly appreciated having her coach the first robotics team last year. And we've been able to expand it to close to or over 100 students in Grade 5 this year. Last year, we had about 25 that we were able to offer it to. So, it's been well-received and students have been able to have this great opportunity.
Any comments?
I would, I would just, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you all for doing all that you do. I think this is an amazing opportunity and not a lot of people would give up so much of their time when they already work full-time and have a family. And I thank you to Swanson Road for supporting it. You guys, best of luck, we're going for you.
Thank you.
Wayne?
I would just like to say, great job paying the teacher too. And a great job for putting all of it together. And for our students to be able to do things like this is just great for the district, for the school, the children, everything. So, you ought to be very, very proud of yourselves on what you're doing. And I will definitely vote for you to go. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd just to say, like, I'm very impressed. And I think what you're doing is awesome. And if you continue this way, starting now, I mean, you might be making rockets that take us all to the moon or somewhere. Awesome. Awesome job. So proud of you.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, good job, guys. And I know you guys are an inspiration to the younger kids too. My third grader can't wait to be a part of this program. So, great job. Are you guys going to have a GoFundMe account again? All right, good.
Yes, we are.
All right. Make sure that we publicize that, you know?
Yes.
I would follow up with what Ms. Harrington said. You're, we appreciate your efforts very much. Mrs. Lloyd, fantastic. And when the permission slip came home for the third graders today, same thing. My son can't wait to do it. It's just a fantastic program and we'll support you in any way that we can, budgetary or otherwise. So, thank you for your efforts and you kids, great job. Well done. You make us very proud.
Thank you.
So, if there are no other comments, oh, do we know the judge something?
I was just going to say, it is my recommendation that you approve their trip to Louisville, Kentucky with the best of wishes for the world tournament.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Good luck, guys.
Good luck.
Good luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Thank you.
Chair, perhaps they'll even come back afterwards and give us an update or a report on their experience, maybe.
Sure. Or for now, maybe you could walk right up this way and shake our hand so we can congratulate you personally. That would be great.
Right in front, yeah.
Isabella, congratulations.
Well done.
Anthony, congratulations.
Well done and good luck.
Yes. Good luck.
Well done.
And have fun, too.
Well done. Good luck. Yep, have fun.
And have fun.
You are. Good to meet you. Good luck. Have fun.
Thanks again.
You can, no, they can leave if you want. They may not without you telling them.
You're dismissed if you'd like to go home and squeeze in some video games or robotics before bedtime. Collect some papers. Thank you. Thanks again. Have a great night. Good luck.
Mrs. Lloyd, we're lucky to have you.
I am lucky to be here. I love Auburn and I like what I do, so I'm a pretty lucky girl.
Well, it works both ways.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
All right. Moving right along.
Just wanted to share with you, I know we had taken last year off from this, the Relay for Life. They did it a couple of years really successfully at the high school, a partnership with the middle school and high school. But we are planning, they are planning to hold it again this year on June 10th. So, more information will be coming out. But it really was a great, great event. And when more details are known, I will share it with you. And if you're able to stop by, it would be really great.
Excellent.
The next item, just wanted to keep you updated regarding that compute, Community Compact Grant. There are not yet any funds tied to this, but through Town Manager Jacobson, she and I have been discussing it. And it appears that some may be coming available to us. So, I think it's a great opportunity and we're fortunate. And I know that many of you went that day for the photo, so which is great for that.
It was nice. Hopefully, there is some money forthcoming.
Exactly.
They're not going to send us a bill to be part of it.
No.
Not only that, but just getting it done, it opens us up to get other grants in different avenues that you couldn't get unless you had that.
Exactly. Exactly. No, that's why, I think it's certainly going to open doors for us.
Right.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
Excellent. And now move on to unfinished business.
Thank you. We had originally scheduled March 16th, tentatively back when you had set the dates for this school year, as our public hearing. Based on the fact that Senator Moore has requested to be in attendance that night and to provide an update regarding the FY 17 budget, it's my recommendation that we push the public hearing off to April 6th. That way, we may even have more information. It's our next regularly scheduled meeting. Anyway, we would hold it in the auditorium of Auburn High if we had, as we have in the past. And if you approve of this, at the next meeting, I'll bring a letter for your approval that we send to town meeting members notifying them of that and the availability of our budget. So, it is my recommendation we do so.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to schedule the school committee's public hearing on the FY 2017 draft budget to Wednesday, April 16th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Great.
So, March, excuse me, March 16th will just be a regular meeting then?
Just be a regular school committee meeting here. And Senator Moore will be in attendance and we'll have our regular agenda of items.
Okay, moving on.
The next item, at our last meeting of February 3rd, there was a request made. I shared with you that the town was seeking for us to reduce our budget by $158,887. So, at the direction of the committee, a team of us worked with the leadership team and looked at how could we potentially do that. And what I have before you is I believe what you had requested was a tiered approach. And in Tier 1 shows a reduction of $101,533. And just to walk through that, on the first side of it, I guess they both have the date on it. It really reflects reductions, minimal reductions, in classroom supply lines. And we would be able to, because we want to make sure that teachers in classrooms have all of the materials and supplies that they need, we were able to identify, do some cost savings in this year's budget, that if we needed to, we could purchase some of these items so they will not be at a loss for teachers or classrooms. Continuing on with Tier 1, as we do and as I've shared with you these past eight years in terms of budget preparation, the most volatile section of the budget is the special education line and particularly the out-of-district line. Those costs are generally high and are very specific depending on students' needs. And what has recently come to light through the Director of Pupil Services is that a student, needs are going to be changed and the current outplacement will no longer be on an IEP. So, we'll either be returning to our district or to another. So, that's a reduction that we feel very comfortable in making, $37,048. The other reduction in that line, and again, this was something that at the time when we developed the budget back in November, we did not know the value or we're not even aware of how the money in the national grid rebate would come back to us. So, the fact that it is coming back is a credit to us. So, with the savings that we're going to realize this year, with your approval, if you should do so tonight, we would come back at our next meeting and seek a transfer from savings in the new middle school electricity line to the textbook line. Doing that would allow us to reduce the request next year, which is approximately $252,000. So, it would come in at about $198,000, somewhere in that vicinity. Those reductions there totaled $101,553. So, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to take it by tier or if you want me just to explain tiers 2 and 3 from there. Happy to do it how you'd like.
I'm okay with you going through all three tiers if that's the will of the committee.
If I can have some clarification?
I'm sorry, what was it?
Is it okay if I just have some clarification?
Sure.
I mean, it, just because I feel like I'm...
Absolutely.
So, for the, thank you, through the chair. So, just for the textbooks, with the national grid rebate, we would still be able to proceed with the purchase of new textbooks this year?
Correct.
We're just offsetting by 60, okay?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Confirmed.
So, no, that's a great question to the chair. So, what we would actually do is because we're going to have that savings in electricity line with, we'd come at the next meeting, transfer $60,000 into the textbook line. And we'd actually purchase some of those materials now. So, the literacy team that's working under Dr. Lozain and the team of principals with teachers, they should have a selection within the month on that. So, this would actually allow us to purchase materials, particularly ones for teachers. What we try to do is give them the materials before they leave for the summer because many of them like to look through them during the summer. So, it would allow us to do that.
So, it'd be more of a phased approach?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Brunel, in Tier 1, we're cutting a little bit out of the classroom supply account.
Correct.
And, and, yeah, out of each. And the reduction in tuition is a savings.
Correct.
For that one student. And then, that's basically all that's affecting our program in Tier 1.
Correct. Because the reduction in district, out-of-district tuitions, that's because that's, we have a student who will no longer need that.
Right.
Correct.
So, basically, the only thing we're really looking at cutting that we, you know, for funds for the district would be a little, would be this first page on supplies.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
In Tier 1.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm going to suggest that we do one tier at a time since we're halfway...
Yeah.
Probably halfway through the discussion on this one. And we've got kind of a short agenda tonight. I think we've got some time to go through one at a time. So, any other comments or questions about Tier 1?
No.
To me, I actually think those make a lot of sense. You know, and I, again, I'm always appreciative of the create, I mean, how creative you guys are in playing ways, but keep your budget tight. Just thank you.
And as Dr. Brunel said, some of these things were unforeseen. We really didn't know that we were going to be receiving that money. It's not like we're trying to press the town, you know, full-court press on them. It's, you know, every year, it's just that we came up with that money after the fact. But, okay, great. Let's move on to Tier 2.
So, in terms of Tier 2, and actually what we did, and this was a, you know, no cut is an easy one, although a couple of the ones we just discussed were easy are due to changing circumstances. But in Tiers 2 and 3, we looked at new positions that we had brought forward. And while this comes painfully, I would share with you, in terms of looking at the media tech position, the intention was to bring forward, if you remember this current school year, we added a tech media person at Swanson Road. It was just two years ago that we added a media tech person at the middle school. There was a time, initially when I was here, my first several years, we had a librarian at the high school only. And all others were run by volunteers or sometimes we had a secretary or staff member help. So, our intention was to add a media tech person, particularly in light of the wealth of technology that we have available in the district. And really, not only to help and be sure that it's maintained and up-to-date, but really, it's that integration piece. And I think you saw evidence of that at the last meeting. So, what we would propose in Tier 2 is to reduce that position by half. So, currently, rather than the individual splitting time between Bryn Mawr and PAC, say approximately two and a half days each, or mornings or afternoons, however they decided, instead, the person would be in district in total for two and a half days, basically spending a day and a half at each school, a day and a quarter, excuse me, at each school to make up the two and a half. And then Tier 3, which is the far more drastic reduction, would be to eliminate the position altogether.
So, really, not much going on in 2 and 3, other than that?
Correct.
Media specialist, so.
Correct.
Hmm. I would entertain any discussion?
Comment to me?
Harrington?
I will stand firm on this where I don't think reducing or eliminating is a good idea on this certain position. Both schools have been asking for this position for years and it's always one of the first ones to get cut. We give them all the technology, but we don't give them the support. It's a strain on the principals, teachers, and Mr. Bouvier. And then it kind of falls down onto, it trickles down to the volunteers and the people that run the library. And I know up at PAC, and I know the same thing happens at Bryn Mawr, when I'm in those libraries, there's not enough volunteers. People are really stressed out and teachers don't even bother going to the library if there's no volunteers down there. So, now we have classes that don't get to use the library on certain days of the week. So, I really feel Swanson Road has one and even one over there. It doesn't seem like it's enough. You know, we have so much technology and we're growing. So, I don't know. I will not support a cut in that.
Any further comments?
I feel the same way as Jesse. I think we eliminated it from the budget last year, not filling those positions. I think enough is enough. It's time to give Bryn Mawr and PAC at least some help. I mean, this is, this is just minimum. Two, what, one and a quarter days? That's all they get? I mean, no.
That's for Tier 3. Tier 2 is two and a half days each.
To, is it, no. No.
Eliminating them completely?
No. Tier 3 is completely gone.
All 3 is completely gone.
And Tier 2 is?
Okay.
Half.
One and a quarter day each. I mean, I think that's so minimal that I don't even support that. I mean, we, I think we need those positions. Enough is enough.
Okay, just to, just so we're all on the same page, is that the only concern? We're good with national grid money and the textbooks and that type of thing? Or are we still going to discuss that as well?
Oh, we are...
Wayne, why don't you, go ahead, Wayne.
Yeah.
Well, I don't believe in reducing classroom supplies. I don't think we should reduce our budget any more than we already have. As I said before, and I will stick to what I have said before, that we're being dictated on what we're going to do with our budget. The teams go out there and they cut and cut and cut and cut and cut and cut. The town officials have no knowledge either running of the schools, or the money you need, or anything. You have meetings prior to the budget, I understand that. But still, you know, I, I just don't believe in cutting any more than what we have.
Ms. Harrington?
Yeah, my only concern with the reducing the classroom supplies, I just don't want that to fall onto the teachers. They're already strapped enough as it is, and I, I know I had asked you that earlier.
Sure.
But I just wanna make it public, the answer to that question.
Yeah. So through the chair, this would not fall on teachers to pay, due to some savings that we've realized this year. We could actually use money, so that way to keep them whole. So it would not be an effective real reduction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wayne?
I think some of the teachers now do it anyway. They have to buy things or replace things without going through the budget. They personally do it on a day-to-day basis. And they really shouldn't have to be doing that, in my opinion. I mean, it's, it's very good for doing it, but somewhere, it needs to be adjusted. That's my opinion.
Through the chair, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I agree that teachers do regularly spend money out of their, their own pockets, um, for things. But all that I'm stating is, these cuts here won't directly negatively impact teachers. But I hear your point, and, and I appreciate and respect.
Very, very valid point. I will say, and not to, um, not to dispute what you're saying, but te, teachers, it's their passion, and when they see something that they like, they're gonna buy it, or they think of some way they can help other students. And it's a lot easier to buy it than it is to fill out the purchase orders and go through department heads. So a, a lot of the times when they're buying, it's not out of necessity, because I think that the classroom supplies are adequate. And I, I wouldn't wanna see, I wouldn't wanna have to experience any further cuts, because I believe we would be in trouble had it not been for that National Grid money. I believe we would be in trouble.
Yeah.
So, um, I would just say that I, I agree with Wayne. I would always try to make sure that our teachers do not have to make these purchases. And if they want to, I mean, like I said, it's their passion, and, and it happens all the time. I see it all the time. Actually, I'm included in that.
I was too.
Any further comments?
I, I just echo the sentiment of my fellow committee members that, especially with tier three, I would be hard pressed to vote for that. Now, that said, I'm also aware of the town's current position. We had a meeting on Monday, Monday, last week, actually, for the, the school reuse committee. And it, it came to light that the town, I'm, I'm not sure if anyone's aware, but the, the insurance cost that came to the town was much higher than expected, and that's impacting everyone's budget down low. It's just, no one is going to be happy walking away from their budget meetings this year. And it was an unforeseen cost that was really, um, quadruple or five times.
Are you talking about insuring the, uh, empty buildings?
No, it wasn't just, it was just overall for towns, towns, boys. It just came up, um, through, through discussion. So what I might be interested in saying is, if there is a different way, if, you know, if we can meet somewhere in the middle, maybe we do still hit this cumulative reduction of one fifty-eight, and maybe we don't take it out of the tech media, or the tech and media specialists. Maybe we, sorry, Cecilia, find another, find another way, another place to dig. Because I, I do feel like if we're going to, um, really stand behind what we're pushing our teachers and our students to do, which has become more, um, you know, proficient in technology, we really do need to support them, and, you know, that was kind of our plan long-term.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree. I'm not, I'm not trying to sway, sway the committee either way, but I would agree. I think it's a matter of protecting the, the interest of the residents. I mean, the residents came forward when we asked for all this technology. They had, they, they, they didn't bat an eye. They supplied us with the technology. And now, w- with the possibility of the technology being compromised, or the students not being able to use it to the fullest extent, I feel like we may be shortchanging the residents who originally paid for it. So I would agree that, um, we need that media specialist. To what extent, how many hours? I don't know. I think that, I think I would, um, leave that to the experts. But, you know, I, I do, I do agree with, um, the comments so far. Wayne?
Do you have any idea, Mary Ellen, as to the, how much the town has in free cash and an instability fund? I, I think the free cashes are up around three million, if I remember, but I could be wrong.
I, I have heard the number, through the chair, I've heard the number, Mr. Page. I'd actually prefer to request the information and share it with you at the next meeting. I just don't wanna misspeak. I, I'm not a hundred percent certain of the number.
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
But I could certainly get that for you for the next meeting.
Okay, I'd like to hear about that. And then go from there.
Well, let's.
If the committee doesn't mind either that, or you can take a vote.
I don't think it's gonna hurt us to take a vote at this point in time, but if the, if it's the will of the committee to, to hold off on, on that information. I will just say this, um, I'm not an expert on municipal finance, but if we're talking about free cash, and that's something that we're gonna ask them, not that I think we have any power to do so, or that they'll supply us with that, but if we're gonna ask them to dig into that, just be aware that every other, um, agency in town is gonna say, oh, free cash? Perfect, I'll take some free cash. Wayne?
I understand what you're saying, George, and you're right. It possibly can't happen that way. But my thing is still is that we cut this budget so much, and so much, and so much, and so much, and it's our students that are, um, getting gypped.
And I, I.
And the taxpayers, because we need the money for the children. They're all children out of Auburn and other places too. But we gotta make sure that we support them. And I think, as I said previous, and I'll say it again, is that I think we are being dictated by the town administration. And that's my final thought on that.
Okay, um, any other comments?
I would just like to say that I'm comfortable supporting the tier one cuts, because as Dr. Brunel explained, they can get the, um, supplies probably now. And the rest is, um, basically, um, all set because of the National Grid money. So I could support that. The others, no.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion? And we can still get that other information for the next meeting?
If they need more.
Well, I'm not gonna vote for it until I get that information.
Then could I just also make a form of request? Because I'm actually not against the actual number that we're reducing, but I, I have a problem with what we're taking to reduce to get to tier, tier two and tier three. So I, and that's just, just after setting any other meeting that I was in. But I, if we are just voting on which tier in these conditions, I, I would be hard pressed to vote for anything other than tier one. So I don't know how we'd like to move for that, maybe move forward beyond that. But if we want alternate scenarios for next week, but we do wanna approve this, that.
I would, I would support, um, a motion and a vote for tier one myself. But again, if it's the will of the committee to put this off until the next meeting, we can certainly do that.
Well, I'm fine with tier two. I'm fine with tier one, yeah.
I doubt at least we'd give them some idea of where, where we're at.
Let me ask this, Dr. Brunel. Obviously, um, there were many noses to the grindstone when you went back to put these tiers together. Do you see a lot of movement, um, in going back with the leadership team, as far as what Ms. Harrington is, is asking for? Do you, whether, is there any, are there any other surprises that you might have for us that you may be able to kind of move things around in support of the media tech specialists?
So what I could respond to that is, what I think I'm hearing is, um, that there seems to be some support for tier one reductions, as they really not gonna negatively impact our program. And then perhaps to go back, we have a leadership team meeting on Friday, for us to go back and look and to bring back to you. So these are two scenarios, but bring back to you some other potential optional scenarios at the meeting on the sixteenth.
And that's still gonna allow us enough time moving forward?
It will, because I'm actually, was gonna share into new business. We were just invited today. We'll present our budget to the Finance Committee on May twenty-third. But our public hearing is not until April sixth. So I will say, in years past, um, we have gone in with the budget, whatever the school committee has approved at that time, presented it to the Finance Committee. And, you know, there, there's still plenty of time before the May annual town meeting. It remains a fluid document, quite honestly.
Okay, do we need a motion to push off the motion that I have here? Or are we just putting it on hold? The recommended motion to approve one of the tiers?
I mean, you could certainly, that's gonna be the decision of the committee. I think that there's a motion on the floor to approve it tier one, and then perhaps it's a second motion.
No, not yet.
Oh, I thought you had said that, I'm sorry.
No, she was willing to support it.
I would like to make a motion to put it on hold until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. All right. So see what kind of magic you can work behind the scenes.
Okay.
I mean, if I could just say one more thing, it's easier to cut something that hasn't happened than to cut something that's in existence. Right. Which, which is, I'm sure that's why that's here.
Sure.
As opposed to something else, that we're already accustomed, accustomed to using and having.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
But at, at the same time, I think that we're all in agreement that, um, this media specialist position is, is.
It's important.
Of the utmost importance, given the, the technology that we utilizing.
So that's right. I don't foresee us picking up other things to cut in this place, I mean.
All right.
I just don't, but.
Moving on.
Uh, just a reminder that bus applications are due June first.
And we now move on.
Are they coming in pretty good now, or? Uh, just starting to trickle in. I would say it's pretty slow, which is not unusual for this early on. Um, but generally, we, we continue to, they've gone home in hard copy. We send them home in email notifications, but, um, it doesn't really pick up steam until a little bit later.
Yeah.
Until a deadline.
Maybe till the refund checks come in from the taxes.
Hey, there you go.
Yeah.
That was a good one.
We now move on to new business?
Um, as noted in the memo, we were recently notified that the town meeting warrant for the May town meeting was open and will actually close, uh, on Monday, March seventh. So this is where's Biggie prepared, based on previous, um, years? The requests that we have, um, the first one being through the Medicaid receipts, and this remains at the same level that we are at currently. And she had done an analysis around that. And then also to take the interest that we use from the High School Health and Recreation Trust Fund to help support site managers. Our budget does support them, um, certainly as well. And then also, um, Article Three is one that in the past, we've actually postponed until the fall meeting, but Mr. Kasanovitch asked that we put it in here in case we knew of the receipts. This is for the homeless transportation reimbursement. Those monies in the past, the past couple of years have not come in until July, so we have to postpone it in May, but it's in here as a placeholder, in case we know it at the time. So it is our recommendation that you approve these. And we have not, um, just for the record, we have not put in here any potential transfers for CIP, because we won't know it. If it stays the same timeline with the MSBA, we won't know until after early June. So we'll have to do that in the fall as well.
Wayne?
On Article Two, we're gonna have, um, the cost in there?
We will.
By town meeting?
By town meeting, we will. Um, Mr. Kasanovitch waits until very close and waits to see what the interest hit.
No, that's fine, as long as it gets to town meeting.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely, yes.
I would entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the school department's warrant articles for the annual town meeting, as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
The upcoming events noted here, I do wanna just say again that we'll be presenting on March twenty-third to the Finance Committee. And also, as you can see in here, I know I've noted before, Special Olympics will be held next weekend, the weekend of, um, March twelfth and thirteenth at Auburn High School, always a great event. There are numerous, um, field trips upcoming, concerts, and trimester three actually begins on the fourteenth of March. So, uh, we're heading into the last leg of the schoolie, which seems nearly impossible to believe, quite honestly, that it's, uh, and I'm not trying to rush it, but it just seems amazing to me that we're already talking about spring events.
It's moving right along.
Especially with the snow we've had this year.
I know, please, please, exactly.
Yeah.
Is that all under new business?
It is, thank you.
We now move on to business and financial. Cecilia, take it away.
Okay, thank you. You have in your packets, um, dated February twenty-fifth, a year-to-date budget report for your review. And with that, I've also provided a list of budget transfers that I'd like to get your approval on. And if you have any questions, if you have any answers on?
I would entertain a motion to approve the transfers.
I'd make a motion to approve the transfers, as presented by our business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, this is a vote.
In addition, I've included a list of the district revolving accounts for your review. And I'd also be happy to answer any questions you have about those.
Any questions concerning the revolving accounts?
No.
Seeing none.
I ready? I would, the next item that I'd like to do is, I'd like to request the establishment of a new revolving account, and it would be entitled Teacher's Choice. At present, the Auburn Education Association contract allows for, it began July two thousand fifteen, they allow for, under Article Twelve, that Auburn teachers, um, not residing in Auburn, are allowed to enroll their children, as long as they meet the criteria outlined in the contract. By establishing this account, I feel that it would keep the monies that we col, we get in from the, um, the state for, uh, revenues for school choice. We get a certain account, a school choice revolving account. This would allow us to have a separate account where we could keep those funds. We'd still be able to use them, but would be, so we would not be commingling those funds. So it would be called Teacher's Choice Revolving, and it would be to put the amounts that those teachers do pay to us for their student to come to, um, school in the district. So I'm asking for your support to establish that with the town.
Could you just explain again, what, what the benefit of separating the two accounts is?
Well, I feel like the money that comes in for school choice right now, um, is, comes in as, um, it's from the state, it's revenue for the students that come school choice to us. We, you know, we receive that amount. And it's important in reporting that you kind of keep that amount separate, as far as the end of the year report and that type of thing. And I just felt that it would be more beneficial to separate them, because it's not actual money that's being received by the state. We're taking this money in as revenue from the, the parent of the student that's coming to the school district like a teacher.
Okay.
Those teachers have to, um, talk with, or request that they're approved in May, I believe, Dr. Brunel?
They do, there's, there's approval, you remember, for the, the recent, um, teacher's contract. And, um, we have two who are taking advantage of that right now, and there's a set outline of when they need to make the payments and such. It's the exact amount of the school choice, uh, monies. We can use it how we see fit, but it's, um, accounting proper to separate the two accounts. So this is really just to establish it and keep them separate. We can still use them as, as we need to.
Okay.
So, does the sending district also pay? How does that work?
So this is actually just for teachers, um, under the teacher's contract. They themselves pay by check.
Okay.
So it's, it's a cost that's equal to school choice, which this year is five thousand dollars. And it's this whole criteria, there needs to be ample room in the class. It needs to go through an approval process. And it's actually the parents of the students who pay the school district. They would make a check payable to the Auburn Public Schools. So rather than it go in the school choice account, which comes directly from the state, this would be a teacher's choice account. The money would go in there, and you would still be able to direct its use completely.
So can the teachers try to take, um, advantage of the school choice and go outside of their contract to do that? How does that work?
They can. So if, um, if we only offer school choice at grades six through twelve, so if they, their child is in those grades, they put in a school choice application, just as any other teacher would.
Just like anyone else for a lottery?
Exactly, and it, and it's just a random lottery. The instances here are at the lower grades. We don't offer school choice.
Okay, and but, and then once they're in, they can continue to pay that money?
Correct.
Okay, excellent.
Correct, yeah.
Any?
Okay, I'm glad you asked, yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
I think that sounds great, especially if it makes our record keeping cleaner. I, I think that that, and if that gives us more flexibility in actually how we spend that money, which I would think the state has more restrictions on that, I, I think it's a great catch. Thank you.
I think it's an excellent opportunity for our teachers and their families. That's, that's great.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the establishment of a revolving account, Teacher's Choice, for funds received from teachers taking advantage of enrolling their students in the Auburn Public Schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Okay. Um, next, um, with the sad news shipped by Dr. Brunel earlier, I'd like to request the estab, request the establishment of an Auburn High School scholarship in memory of Shirley D. Pescoli, to receive funds donated in her memory as requested in her obituary. So I'm looking for approval for that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And then lastly, I'm happy to announce that, um, Dr. Brunel, Mr. Fahey, and myself attended Board of Selectmen meeting on February twenty-second, in which the board voted four to zero to support the submission of the Statement of Interest for the Packard Chalk Room zero to support the submission of the statement of interest for the package our group under the accelerated repair program. Um, right now, so everything has been sent in. Um, our statement of interest is complete with MSBA. Usually, the process takes a while. Um, you know, we don't know whether we'll be invited or not. If, if we are invited to participate, we will come back to discuss this with you, and we'll also have to go and have another meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Um, it in no way makes us, you know, it makes it that we have to do this, but, um, we're looking forward to the potential of, hopefully being offered the opportunities, so. And the Board of Selectmen, we're very supportive of that, so.
Excellent.
Good.
Well, thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, you look good on TV, both of you.
And in person, I might add. Okay.
That's my report, so thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. We now move on to policies.
Thank you. So there's one, uh, update we'd like to add to the medication designation policy. It's on the rear side of this, in terms of administering medications in emergencies. Um, with a written orders, obviously, that would need to be provided by the school physician, um, to allow epinephrine, Benadryl, and Narcan to be used in emergency situations. And it includes a protocol in terms of calling 911 and a team being involved and such. Uh, we think this makes good, great sense, um, for us as a district, and the nurse leaders in our ongoing discussions are in great support of this. So it is my recommendation that you approve the amended policy.
I would entertain that motion.
Can you make a motion to approve the amended policy?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just appreciate how thorough we are in constantly looking at our policies. As a parent, I would feel comfortable with, especially the fact that the school nurse needs to stay at the building for the best, for my benefit. That's great.
And, um, just say the, appreciate the efforts of the school nurses for being on board with this and, and everything else that they do. That's excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And do we need to go into executive session?
Just a very brief one, I think.
I would entertain that motion. Well, you're getting pushy tonight.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm just-
Someone's in a hurry. I would, I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session as per mesh general law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Roll call vote?
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scooby?
Yes. Good night, everyone.